To order, I want to thank everybody for their patience. Our previous meeting ran a little longer than anticipated, so thank you very much for your, for your attention. With that, we will begin with our invocation. Our auditor, Victor Hurlberg, will be leading us in our invocation this evening. Victor?
If you're able to stand, if you could join me in a prayer, please. Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and direction in this new year. We thank you for being so blessed to continue to have another year, Lord, on this earth, and we just ask that we can follow your will. We pray for this county, for this budget, the resources you provided, that it would be used to improve our community, to help one another, to help our neighbor. Lord, we pray for those who are suffering out in the winter storm here in the Kansas City metro and in Clay County. We pray for those suffering through the fires in California. And, Lord, we just ask that you guide us and protect us. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Whittington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Well, she has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. I do have one change myself. I would like to move that we remove 2025-07. The reason for that is the library board. We are trying to get all commissions and boards back on a rotating basis. That did not happen on this particular one. I spoke today with the chair and with one of the members of that board, so we will try to reestablish a proper sequencing so all the seats don't come up in kind of one bunch so that we can do a more gradual rotation. With that, that is the motion that I would like to make. Is there any discussion on that motion? Commissioner Whittington, did you want to comment on that particular motion?
No, I have no motion there.
Very well, I will get back to you once we have disposed of what's on the floor. Commissioner Wagner?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There we go.
Yeah, I agree with what's been suggested. I believe we have three that came up that we were looking at tonight. We have another that is up in July of next year, I believe. Just as we are on staggered terms now to create institutional memory as it moves forward, I believe that was what was contemplated when these positions were supposed to be one person each year and so on and so forth. The past commissions kind of got that a little squirrely, a little bit, but I think this presents us an opportunity to fix that. So my agreement is, has nothing to do with the individuals who serve and who have been suggested and more that, let's just get this back to the right sequence the way it was meant to be. So I will be supporting, supporting that. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any, any comments on the motion on the floor? Commissioner Carpenter, let's see if I can get over my fat finger syndrome here.
Thank you. No, so I recall having conversations about the staggering specifically to that board before. What I don't recall is, did we ever get, do we know, is that required by any bylaws like of Mid-Continent Public Library?
To my knowledge, no, they are not, but I think it's good government. I don't think there is a restriction one way or the other. Now, if council has other information, I'd certainly be wanting to hear that, but to my knowledge, no, there is. It's just, I think, good practice.
Got it, yeah, and I presume you haven't even looked into it, right? So, but go ahead, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not aware of any requirement for staggering, other than just the allocation between the counties for appointments. I know historically they had been staggered and I think they got bunched up and they weren't staggered, and so multiple appointments were made in December of '20, I believe, and that's where, that's what we're dealing with now.
Yeah, good deal. So I'm mostly just curious whether it was required or not, but certainly agree with you that, that it's a thing to do regardless of whether it's required.
No, that is, that is an excellent question because there are some boards and commissions, particularly those that are statutory, that have their quirks. And so, no, that's a, that's a very good question, and we've been trying to do that with all the other boards and commissions. Quite honestly, this one just got biased this time.
Good deal. Thanks.
Any further comments on the issue before us? Seeing none, I would close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner.
I still want to make a motion on the agenda.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us back to our amended, except in this case, it is now the amended as amended. Commissioner Whittington, I believe you were seeking recognition. Hold on, let me, I'm sorry, I am trying to get over, there you are.
So, so we voted to remove 2025-07, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to move 2025-05, 06, 08, 09, and 10 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and I don't care where on the regular agenda.
That, because with consent agenda, any commissioner may, may request that moving, so while we can do that, that certainly is a doable thing. It does not require a vote, it just requires the request by one commissioner.
Yeah, so I, okay, I want to request that then.
Would you, if you'd like, we'll go ahead and do that. If you, since you have the floor, if you have any comments you would like to make on that, please make them.
I, I don't have any comments to make right now, but I would like to, like I said, move all those to the regular agenda, and I don't care where we put those at on the regular agenda.
Okay, just to verify, we are talking about?
05.
05, 06, 08, 09, and 10.
Yes.
Thank you. And I think, I'm looking at what we have here. I think unless there's, I think we just put them in the end because that way, if people showed up for things like the budget, that we can keep that on track.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Very good. Are there, are there any other, is there any more discussion on the tonight's agenda as amended? Seeing none, that brings us back to our original motion to pass our agenda. Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized to close on as amended. I close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is going to be public comments, and before we get started on that, a couple of just housekeeping issues on that. First and foremost, when a citizen wants to comment, when we get to this section, come up to the podium, make sure that the green light is on, on the microphone, state your name, and then address the commission on what it is that you would like to say. There are, you know, no restrictions. So what I would like to know is, because I see a number of people here, are, is there, are there, how many people anticipate coming up to speak? So I can just kind of run the traffic through here. Okay, that's only three, that shouldn't be too bad. What I was going to say is, if it gets to be a large number of people, it would be appreciated if you could just say that you agree with somebody. Certainly you may say what you please, but just in the interest of making sure everybody has the opportunity to speak, I anticipate that we will be talking about the airport issue. I think a couple of things that might be good to point out. One is, it is not on the agenda tonight, so we are not, as commissioners, allowed to discuss that in courts with sunshine law. When a citizen comes up and they want to speak on that subject, they are perfectly in order. I will also hold in order, any commissioner who cares to inquire more directly about that, whether it's detail or clarification, I will hold that in order, but we cannot, as a commission, do an actual discussion. The other thing I would like to point out is that it is almost assuredly, this issue is going to come up in another public meeting, whether next week or the week after, and so please do not have the impression that this would be the last opportunity that you would have to address this issue. If you want to come up and address another issue, obviously that is also, would be in order. So with that, if you would like, the first citizen who would like to come up, as I said, make sure the light is green, state your name, and, and share your thoughts with us. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name's Mike Philpott, first comments at a public forum like this. I just want to make some comments about our airport, GPH. I've been a county citizen mostly since 1968, so I've lived in the county a long time and I've seen a lot, a lot happen. I just recently retired as an airline pilot for American Airlines and flew for the charter outfit that's at GPH now for three years, flying all over the country, flown private airplanes all over the world, all over the country and around the world. First thing I'd like to say is, I don't know anything about running county business, but if I was elected a commissioner, and I wasn't sure about something, I would go get some information about it, and in this case, I've spoken to at least two of the, or two of the Airport Advisory Board members contacted me after I sent a letter to them, as well as you, and said they weren't aware of any of this happening at all. So I don't see very many of you guys aren't familiar to me from being at the airport or being pilots, so I'm not sure where you get your information about how to operate the airport. So that's, I know you can't answer it, but that's a question I'd have. Justification for the rate increases, my hangar rent's up about 22%, including this electric surcharge in about a year. I don't understand where, is there justification for 22% increase? I mean, I know you can't answer me, but where's that at? I don't know. I guess I'd like to know about that. Also, our hangar rents now are almost the same as our downtown airport, an airport that has fire, crash fire rescue, a control tower, ground control, maintenance services, all kinds of stuff. We don't have any of those things, yet our hangar rents run in the same price as theirs now. I just checked before I came up here tonight, seeing, well, you know, downtown airports more costly to operate out of because they, you know, they're a big airport and they have higher fuel prices. Their fuel prices tonight are 75% cheaper than we're paying at Clay County. So I have a problem with that as well. Since the current people who are running the airport have been involved, services, you know, they'll bring an airplane in and out. I've heard multiple people can't get a light bulb changed. I haven't had that problem. There's, there's no entertainment facilities as far as they had a pool table. Pilots that are on breaks, they like, they, if they're waiting on their customers, they need a couple hours to just chill out and, whether it's watch TV, which there wasn't one until very recently. Pilot sleep lounges, place to rest your eyes, you know, you might have a long day, might be fun all night. All those things have disappeared, and I don't know what we've gained by, by letting the current operation operate the way they're doing. The services have gone down, prices have gone up, so I don't, I don't know if the county's trying to make profitable a private enterprise. If so, you know, I've got a couple of business ideas I'd like to run by the county, if I know I can be profitable. The county also runs Smithville Marina, I guess, so I'd like to, I wonder if those costs have gone up, because they should go up 22% as well. If everything in the county's gone up and the cost's that much more to operate, are those rates higher? And also, do the slipholders at Smithville Marine or Smithville, any of the lake complexes up there, are they required to buy a minimum amount of fuel on a monthly, quarterly, yearly basis? And if so, why not? So those are just some of the things that, as a county resident and a GPH resident, I'm not happy about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen who'd care to comment, please come forward.
Hi there, Jackie Thorstensen, and I am a semi-retired air transport pilot, certified flight instructor, and the volunteer AOPA, which is Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, Airport Support Network representative, and a Missouri Airport Managers Association member attending the conferences annually. I want to start by saying thank you for the public comments forum, I really appreciate it. I've taken advantage of it in the past just to get to speak and put things on record. Today, this came up pretty late notice when I read the agenda on Monday, I was in Florida, so I started making my flight planning where I, we have our aircraft in Florida for the moment, and a beautiful day to fly yesterday, but when I get to the end of it, checking my nodums, notices to missions, our airports closed. It was till 3 o'clock this afternoon due to the inclement weather that we had, they weren't able to clear the runways and allow us access to the hangars. Surrounding airports were up and running within 48 hours, operations were down at Midwest National Air Center for over 90 hours. In speaking with the FBO, I know they were out there working, doing their best with the equipment they had, and I was told that they've asked for other equipment, better equipment, and been denied that. And at the end of the day, if, you know, hangar rents were to be, continue to go in a reasonable fashion of what was projected in the 2024 ordinance that was approved in January of this last year, that was projected out to year 2028, I don't think you'd have any complaints. We, you know, we know we're a rural airport in an unincorporated part of the county, and that, we would be on board with that, but with the recent increases, I'd like to think that you guys, us, we all think we're reasonable, but these rate increases are unreasonable. Again, they're competing with downtown, even, those that are in the large nested hangars are actually paying $9 more a month than they are at lease summit. So I don't, and I don't think we're competing with airports like lease summit. They have more services, and services ought to support themselves as well. You know, if I need oxygen, my aircraft has a ceiling to 24,000 feet, I have to fly somebody, someplace else to get that oxygen, pay for it, and then, or do it the day before or prior, but my point is even simple little things like that, we don't have, and I'm okay with it because I know I'm at Midwest National Air Center, I have a certain amount of convenience to my home, and I'm okay with that. But if I want those big things and those big ticket items, then I would be at a different airport. And so the point is, it needs to be looked at again and possibly amended, and look at those numbers that were in the 2024 ordinance, because I know you just passed an ordinance with them in the budget in October. So looking at, also, I wanted to highlight the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics that was just released in November for the previous 12 months, that's 2.7%. Last year, we had an 8% increase on the hangars. This year, as Mike, the previous tenant spoke of, actually, he rounded it down, it's 23% increase. That's with the electrical fee that has been added, which is $25. It was 15% prior, and then add the fee of $25, it comes to 23% for the small nested hangars, and 18% for the large nested hangars. One of the things I would like to see more transparency on is the electrical fee. What's it based on? Who's getting it? When, if there's leftover in the fund, where is it going? What buildings is it paying for? That sort of thing. I think the county could be a lot more transparent in what that's going to go towards. The light bulb thing was quite humorous because one person mentioned it and we were all like, yeah, I, I had, I waited four months for my light bulb, and then, and then when it finally did come, well, we have our own light bulb, what we were waiting on was the scissor lift, and it still didn't work. So, and we haven't had our aircraft in the hangar for probably the last two months because it's been in maintenance. So I came back to get my car out of the hangar and, and I let them know that I had been gone so they could get the scissor lift back in there and repair the light fixture, and I came back and it's still not repaired. So I think, I haven't, wasn't able to get over there today, I do believe it has been repaired, but the point was, it's months even for a simple repair. And while we're talking about repairs and why I say hangar rents are unreasonable, all of our hangars leak. You know, I do a pretty nice job of polishing and putting the elbow grease on it and making that plane look nice, and then you come back after a little bit of rain or something and the water spots are all over it. Again, they're at their life limit, I think, on those roofs, and I know on the agenda that's on, to start that application grant, application process, but that could take years, and it, I won't even go into why it may not happen, but it could take years. So we're looking at living with the leaking hangars, and if you're on A row, the large nested hangars that face the ramp, all those hangar doors need new bumper seals, those aren't even made to last 30 years. Every time an airplane comes to the ramp, whether it be a jet or a prop plane, it blows the debris underneath that seal that's not sealing into their hangars. And so those are some of the reasons too, that it, the hangar increases are not justified, they're not reasonable, and it's, again, needs to be looked at, and I would appreciate that. Fuel minimums, that's in the resolution 2024-363 that was passed on December 19th. I mean, I don't really need to elaborate too much on that because I don't think it's going to be able to stay in there, it simply is not legal, it hasn't been tried in a law, a court, but anyone that's had it explained to them pretty much backs off of it, and we're talking about heavy hitters like Atlantic Aviation that's tried it, and once they've had it explained to them, they understand and they just like drop it. So, but I'd like to say, if it, if that's something that the county or the FBO operator wants to push on, they're going to get a lot of pushback hard on that. We're not going to have fuel minimums at Midwest National Air Center. They may have them at lease summit, maybe their tenants didn't push back on it, but that doesn't mean it's legal or has standing. So I hope that can just simply go away pretty soon, and I think it will. The verbiage in that resolution is pretty aggressive, overly zealous, even somewhat condescending at times to us. I'm going to say I'm a tenant, I have been a tenant, you know, I think we're all tenants, the new contract or the new resolution calls us users, it'll be a lease contract. For whatever those rights entail, I want the rights of being a tenant, and I'm requesting that. And some of that aggressive language, I, you know, I did real estate for several years in the state of Nevada, I have a license there. You know, there's something they called arms-length transaction, and I just don't feel that when I read this resolution, as far as the lease for the tenants. So I would like for maybe to tone down and have respectful language for all parties in that lease agreement. Overall, I just want to say, I checked some of the other FBOs that are being run by the same company, and none of this is happening at those FBOs, maybe their day is coming, but it, this very much feels like a shakedown for us at Midwest National Center, Air Center as tenants, and it just doesn't feel good at all, and that's why we're all here tonight. I want to say, comment on the furnishings in the terminal, something as simple as the Airport Community Board came down immediately in January 2024 when they took over the terminal, and that needs to come back. That's something that doesn't cost anybody any money, and it's a way for everyone to communicate. Every time I walked in there to use the facilities, I always checked the board, I'd find out what was going on with, you know, Young Eagles, the EAA group over at Roosterville, you know, if you needed someone to maybe do a detail on your aircraft, it was just a way to share information and be a community, and I'd like to see that come back. I realize that you don't personally have control over that, but again, I'm putting it on public record here. And then I want to close with talking about the Airport Advisory Board. This is, I've been beating this drum for a while that you need to listen, or you need to get information from your airport advisory board, because I know each of you, I watch you almost weekly, maybe not right live, but you all are amazing and have so much to bring, but you can't, not all of you have the, you know, like, we're not all in law enforcement like Commissioner Johnson, and, and he brings a lot to the table on that. Well, unless you're aviators or been in the, in aviation, there's so much that just doesn't translate to everyday life, like one of the things, you know, is the fuel requirements. You think, oh, how, I can do 50 gallons in my car pretty easily, but it doesn't translate. The verbiage in that resolution is pretty aggressive, overly zealous, even somewhat condescending at times to us. I'm going to say I'm a tenant. I have been a tenant. You know, I think we're all tenants. The new contract or the new resolution calls us users. It'll be a lease contract. For whatever those rights entail, I want the rights of being a tenant and I'm requesting that. And some of that aggressive language, I, you know, I did real estate for several years in the state of Nevada. I have a license there. You know, there's something they called arms length transaction. And I just don't feel that when I read this resolution as far as the lease for the tenants. So I would like for maybe to tone down and have respectful language for all parties in that lease agreement. Overall, I just want to say, I, I checked some of the other FBOs that are being run by the same company and none of this is happening at those FBOs. Maybe their day is coming, but it, this very much feels like a shakedown for us at Midwest National Center, Air Center as tenants. And it, it just doesn't feel good at all. And, and that's why we're all here tonight. I want to say, comment on the furnishings in the terminal. Something as simple as the airport community board came down immediately in January 2024 when they took over the terminal. And that needs to come back. That's something that doesn't cost anybody any money and it's a way for everyone to communicate. Every time I walked in there to use the facilities, I always checked the board. I'd find out what was going on with, you know, Young Eagles, the EAA group over at Roosterville. You know, if you needed someone to maybe do a detail on your aircraft, it was just a way to share information and be a community. And I'd like to see that come back. I realize that you don't personally have control over that, but again, I'm putting it on public record here. And then I want to close off with talking about the Airport Advisory Board. This is, I've been beating this drum for a while that you need to listen, or you need to get information from your airport advisory board because I know each of you, I, I watch you almost weekly, maybe not right live, but you, you all are amazing and have so much to bring, but you can't, not all of you have the, you know, like, we're not all in law enforcement like Commissioner Johnson and, and he brings a lot to the table on that. Well, unless you're aviators or been in the, in aviation, there's so much that just doesn't translate to everyday life. Like one of the things, you know, is the fuel requirements. You think, oh, how, I can do 50 gallons in my car pretty easily, but it doesn't translate like that for aviation. So it would be nice that you get their feedback. I questioned the chairman and how much they're involved or not involved really. They're not calling for meetings. They should be meeting minimally each quarter and as needed when things like these resolutions and these ordinances come up on the agenda so that you immediately get a brief from them on, so you can ask the appropriate questions in discussion. I would also like to see that anything to do with the Midwest National Air Center not go straight to the consent agenda, that it be placed on discussion pre first and so that the Airport Advisory Board has a chance to give you that brief where there's questions that can be asked and discussions made. And again, just, the chairman hasn't returned calls, doesn't, has not, from my understanding, communicated with the other airport board members. If he has, I don't, I'm not aware of it. I've, I've reached out to get that information because I don't want to accuse anybody of something that's not right. I don't know their situation, but I, in July, when the tenants were denied their 5% prepaid, six month prepaid, prepaid discount on the hangars, which is also an ordinance, but they were denied by the FBO. I waited over a week to hear from the chairman and I made three texts and two voicemails and I never got a response back. So I, they need to be responsive if they're going to be chairman. And I would appreciate that for all of the tenants. In the end, the tenants that requested did get that information. I did wait for the FBO to release information saying, hey, for those of you that applied for your 5% discount, come on up, we'll make it right with you. The county sent a letter through the county auditor saying, let's right this ship and refund anybody and you the difference. And that letter was never forthcoming. So I, I sense that there's not the goodwill I'd like to see. I'd like to be one happy GA community where it's the Airport Advisory Board, the county and the users or, I don't even want to use that word, tenants, that we all have this open line of communication. Thank you guys again for the public comments. I appreciate this time and your ears.
Could you stay at the podium for just a moment?
Oh, sure.
Commissioner Withington, you are recognized to seek clarification from the citizen?
I have nothing.
Excuse me, let me get your phone, microphone on. I apologize. There you go. You should be.
Yeah, I have nothing for her. You said you were going to allow us to ask questions. So when, when they were done, I had some questions to add.
Of the citizen, yes. So if, if you're seeking clarification for the citizen, and then, yes, certainly that would be in order.
So then I guess I need to save mine to the very end for commissioner comments then if I want to see the, because last year I, I requested an audit or a report from our auditor on how much we have spent on the, on the parks and stuff like, and that's where I want to request something similar to that and see how much money we're actually losing.
And that would be, that would be a conversation, a discussion within the commission.
So I'll just save my comment then for the very end because, for my commissioner comments.
That would be, that would be in order.
Yeah, because I think we've, I think we're losing a lot of money at the airport and I don't want to keep throwing money at a losing thing, so.
You are correct. Those comments would be in order during commissioner comments. I don't see anyone else seeking any clarification, but thank you very much for your comments.
Okay.
Another citizen who would like to make, make comments and address the commission?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeff Schultz. I'm the vice president of the Experimental Aircraft Association, Chapter 612. So this is what Jackie referred to over at Roosterville Airport, but really we're a regional chapter of the EAA. We have members that are all across Clay County, Platte County, as far over as Noah's Ark Airport, all the way to Excelsior Springs. So we really have the entire Northland that come to us to be rolled into the pilot community. So I want to talk on behalf of the EAA. We really rely on GPH. We do our Young Eagles rallies there. We've had some, some challenges, just kind of working through some of the administrative stuff, but we do a lot of public engagement. It's part of our mission as a nonprofit. We engage the public. We, we talk with kids. We give first airplane rides to a lot of youth. We support high school students that want to get into professional aviation as a career. We provide mentorship. We seek, we, we hook them up with flight training opportunities. Our members mentor them as they go through that. And we have a pretty good track record. We, we train a lot of kids that go on to really good paying jobs and careers in aviation. So that's our mission. We also serve as a focal point to just bring the pilot community together for mutual support. I really echo everything that Jackie had said. I think she went through a pretty exhaustive list. We're not opposed to paying our fair share. That's, that's not it. We just look for some transparency. We're looking for reasonable and it needs to be, it needs to match. What we're paying ought to match the level of service that we're receiving. And when you, when you look at other airports and you think, I have an option, I can, I can base at any one of these airports, you do the simple cost benefit analysis. And when you see better service for less money somewhere else, people are inclined to go there. So I just ask that you guys try to find the sweet spot where the service matches the fees. And then specifically, I do want to talk about the, the fuel flowage. This is, seems like maybe a really, a really misguided approach because the fuel that is sold at GPH does not serve every airplane. I'll use my airplane as an example and, and our members in the EAA chapter, this, this is true for many of them. Av gas is available at GPH and jet fuel is available, but Mo gas is no longer available. A lot of small, light airplanes run on Mo gas. Either they optionally can burn it, it's cheaper and better for the engine, or in my case, it is required by the engine manufacturer. I can't buy 100 low lead if I wanted to. So if you force me to buy a minimum amount of fuel, I have no way to really comply with that. And, you know, that has a really dampening effect. I'm going to, I'm going to figure out something, but what does that look like and why, why do we have to bury that, bear that burden? So any sort of fuel minimum is, is hard to really get behind. We have electric aviation, which is up and coming. There are no electric airplanes currently at GPH, but there are some in the area that are under construction. The day is coming. And so, you know, that is something that we ought to create a policy that grows, that embraces any kind of fuel that the airplanes are going to need. I'd love to get Mo gas back at GPH. It was, it was one of the major suppliers of Mo gas to the entire area. And several years ago, that tank was decommissioned and, and just taken out of service. And so now we have to get it from alternate suppliers. So fuel flowage, any sort of minimum for, for av gas or jet fuel is not going to work for everybody. And in my case, it absolutely, I have no way to comply with that. Thanks for allowing us to talk. We really appreciate the work you do on our behalf and I think we can put our heads together and find a good solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Just because you didn't raise your hand does not mean that you surrendered your right to, to address the commission. If there's someone else who would like to come forward, please do so.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Doug Ewart. I'm kind of the new guy around here. I brought my airplane to GPH in the first of March and, you know, enjoying it overall. I'll be very quick. I'm, you know, I'm not independently wealthy. I have, I'm an engineer and, and, you know, and so, and aviation is a, is a, it's a fun and enjoyable and, and, you know, opportunity to learn, opportunity to network with other folks and really, you know, really enjoy it a lot. The, in, in round numbers, and I just wrote some numbers down. When I first came in, in March, I think my rent was around 390. It went pretty quickly to 330. Now it's on the order of, I forget, 370 or 380. The fuel though, if you look at paying about $6.50 for a gallon of, of av gas, if I'm required to buy 50 gallons of that, that's $325 a month on top of the 300 some dollars I'm already paying for rent. That's, you know, that's enough to make me find someplace else to, to live. And so I really appreciate your consideration on this matter, but I just wanted to bring it down to those numbers and thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Is there any one else who would like to speak? And by the way, it doesn't have to be on this particular subject. Is there any citizen who would like to comment to the commission on any subject whatsoever?
Hello, my name is Brett Lovett. I'm a professional business pilot and aircraft owner and I am a hangar tenant at, at the airport. I want to thank the commissioners for listening to our comments tonight and I want to thank everyone who's already commented. I just want to say that I support, agree with and support all the comments that have already been made and I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. Next gentleman, please.
Hello, my name's Steve Baldwin. Just wanted to add a couple of.
Could you speak up just a little bit more, please?
My name's Steve Baldwin. I'd just like to add just a couple of quick comments. Communication has been addressed a little bit, but not to the extent that, I, I don't know that you guys actually realize that we don't really, we're not really notified of hardly anything that's been going on out there for, for a long time. Management has been atrocious at, at the airport for, for several years with, there's been so many different changes and, and, you know, people in and out. And it's just been very poorly, poorly managed, this airport has. We, our county should be, be proud of what we have out there. It's a very nice facility and it's been way underutilized. The, the, the thing's just been run into the ground and, and very poorly managed. I also like to point out that, you know, the tenants are, are just a small group of people. We're not the only users or, you know, people that are using this, this facility, just like our parks department, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that, that come and use the parks, but we're not charging them a bunch of money every, every month and, and trying to load it up on, on everybody in and out of there. So I think it's unfair that, that, you know, we're trying to place this burden to make the, an airport profitable on, on the tenants where, you know, there's people from all over the world that, that come and fly into this airport and, and that, you know, it's just unfair that, that we're trying to, you know, even make it profitable to begin with. You know, I don't think our government, I don't think it's supposed to be profitable. You know, I mean, we, we, there's, there's federal grants, there's a, you know, our money comes from our taxpayers and it's, it's a, it's something that, that the taxpayers and, and the, you know, the people from the United States should be able to use this thing, not, not to, you know, surcharge, you know, and, and trying to, you know, get every, you know, everything they can get out of the tenants because we're of a, I don't know how many hangars are out there, how many tenants for sure we have, but to try to place that burden just on us tenants is, is extremely unfair. So I just like to make that.
One moment, sir. Commissioner Johnson, did you want to inquire a point of clarification?
Yeah, not for him. I actually had a question for our county administrator.
Proceed.
So first of all, thank you, everybody who came tonight and, and commented tonight. I appreciate those comments and, and the concerns you have. One of the underlying things that really concerned me was the concept of non-trparency. So my question from our, our county administrator, would, would it be possible if we had either some kind of on, on discussion in the future or even some kind of study session or something that we can bring back as much information as possible, to be as transparent as possible on the money that's coming to and going from and taxpayer funded money that's going to this airport? Are, are we, are we charging a fair rate? Are we overcharging, you know, that kind of thing? Are we, are taxpayers subsidizing leases, you know, what it is? So everybody knows what the numbers are, what the taxpayers are paying, what the, what the leases are paying, so on and so forth. So it's, we can be as transparent as possible. I know some things, you know, there's some contract things that we can't, we probably can't talk about, but as transparent as possible. So first of all, we don't hear that we're not being transparent because that's, I think all of us up here want to be completely transparent. There's also some philosophies I know that's been talked about, different people, should the county even be in the airport business or not, or should this be a private venture or not? But those things I think should, should be discussed in an open forum with everybody to have some input on. So I just wonder if there's something we could, sometime in the future, and I don't know what that would look like, if that's just on discussion or if that's a, a separate session or what, but I'm just going to throw that out there and see if you got a comment on that.
Administrator?
Absolutely. You know, the, the staff can put together information, historical, going back for however many years the commission would like for us to do, to talk about revenues received and expenditures to operate it. Because again, many of you know, historically, we've had an FBO, then the county managed it, then we had an FBO, then the county management, and now we currently are back with an FBO managing it. So we can provide that information and give it to the commission and do a, a work session on it for some historical information and what that looks like and go from there. Sure, absolutely.
I do want to caution that I, I think we were on the right side of it here, but we want to make sure we are not discussing. The inquiry was what was, whether or not we could have a meeting regarding this. I, I think that was in order, but I do want to make sure that we don't accidentally devolve into, into discussion on a, unnoticed issue. Commissioner Withington, you are recognized?
Yes, so I completely want to see that also. But Steve made a comment that we're not supposed to make the, where's he at? He made a comment about the government not trying to turn a profit and I completely agree. You know, we're not trying to turn a profit out there at the airport. You know, I've said before to, you know, he keeps, I don't know where he.
But the thing.
But you said we can inquire.
You can inquire him, but, but please refrain from getting into policy discussions.
Okay, so I'm going to ask him a question, okay?
Well, hold on a second. The gentleman who he's referring to, are you still in the room? If, first off, if we're going to inquire of him, we need him to be up here. Secondarily, this is for clarification or what we can do, whether or not we should or should not make a profit delves into policy issues.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm just going to ask a question.
So I just want to, I just want to let you know, but please continue.
I appreciate you guys coming out here talking. I've made it, I've, I've said before that I don't think we should be competing with the private, private sector when it comes to things like this. So you had said that, I can't remember exactly what you said, but you, do you think it's fair to ask 250,000 people in this county to subsidize the airport?
What, go ahead. I think we're getting close here, so please, please have caution, but, but if, if you would like to answer the question, you certainly may. This is not an inquiry where you are required. Oh, thank you, Commissioner, for, for pointing out that mic is not on.
No, I don't think, I don't think a lot of our taxes are fair, you know, and I think they're very well mismanaged, you know?
No, I would agree and that's, and I think.
Especially like this airport's been very mismanaged. I'd like to go back on record again about how terrible, I've been, I've been a tenant out there on and off for probably 20, 25 years since it was first built. And to, to see the changes and the way that thing's been managed, you guys should be ashamed. This commission should be ashamed. I know there's been a lot of different commissioners, a lot of different things, you know, over the years it's gone on, but we need to get our, you know, heads together and work together. Again, you know, one of these guys said that, you know, that, I mean, the, the, the rent hasn't, you know, it's went up some, you know, the, it's something we could probably all bear, but we're just tired of all of it. You know, you know, just, none of us are getting notified on anything and then all the services have went, went downhill. I mean, it's just, it's, it's terribly managed out there. Nobody knows what's going on. They won't take care of us. This, the, the, this, the snow removal is atrocious. I mean, it's, it's terrible that, that, you know, you go out there and they, they can't even take, get the snow off the sidewalks or the parking lots. You can't even get in and out of the airport.
So, but we, this is the first that I'm hearing that management is terrible out there since we've gone to the FBO. When we first went to the FBO, Jackie and everybody else had told us how great things were. But now that they want to raise rent, now that they want to raise rent, we're being told that management's terrible. So this is new to me. This is news to me.
Commissioner, this is time for citizen comments. Inquire of the citizen.
I'm inquiring. He said the management was terrible. And I'm just saying, I'm telling him this is the first I heard about this, Jerry.
Please go ahead and express your, your comments.
That's fine. Yeah, just that, that, when they, they came in, they completely upheaved, you know, a lot of things that we'd had in place before and, you know, it's, if, if someone's going to come in trying to make it, make a profit like this FBO is trying to do, which was, you know, that's, that's good. I mean, if they, if, if they're in the business to do that.
Well, I just, can I finish what I was going to say real quick before Jerry interrupted me? So I wanted to say thank you for letting us know your thoughts about the management out there because that hadn't been presented to us previously. That's what I was going to say, Jerry. Thank you for not letting me finish. So I appreciate you, Steve, for bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
And it really needs to be, you know, it should be looked at and we should have better, better communication. Communication has, has not been good at all, so.
These are, by the way, there's one other commissioner who would like to. These are, by the way, there's one other commissioner who would like to comment, who would like to inquire into your comments, and like I say, this is not commissioner commentary time, this is citizen commentary. Commissioner Lawson, you are recognized to inquire as to his opinions.
Thank you. I had a question for our county administrator. So what I'd like to see, and I don't know if this is something we've done in the past before my time, because I'm just not here that long, but one of the things that I noticed, I feel as though we have put people on boards, and these boards are people who have an interest, people who
Commissioner, no, address your questions-
And I want to know, shut up. I want to know-
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I want to know-
No, no, Commissioner.
I want to know-
Commissioner.
If we can please have-
Commissioner.
Our, I'm tired of you browbeating me every time I say something. I'm sorry. When I looked at the Sunshine Law the other day, it did not say that we could not ask. I want to know if the people that are on the board-
Commissioner.
Can come and make a report to us, so we can hear on a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, or whatever, that they will, that what they feel, on all our boards, but on the airport board.
Commissioner, first off, first off, it is a violation of our ordinance to use abusive language, telling people to shut up-
You're abusive to me. Give me a break.
Telling people to shut up is out of order. You can require, you can request opinions of the citizen. Commissioner Johnson was-
Can I just talk to our county councillor, our councillor and our administrator?
You can inquire, but you can only inquire to the degree that it does not devolve, that it does not involve discussion.
I'm not discussing, I'm saying can we do that? Anyway, you can tell me later, Di. That's fine.
Does anybody have any other comment, any other questions that they would ask the citizens? We will have, these are all good commentary and good questions, but they are not noticed for discussion, and we will have them later because we need to. These are good questions. It just need, we need to be in order, and we need to pay attention to the regulations that, to the laws that we are under. Are there any other citizens who would like to comment? Yes, and by the way, you can come back up again.
Well, this is not on my behalf. I've had, I have an email from a tenant that has asked me to read it, and I feel obligated. So the tenant is Stuart Ostrander, and I'm going to read what he asked me to, what he's written. In order to provide, and by the way, I'm Jackie Thorstensen reading for Stuart Ostrander.
Thank you. I would say, thank you for re-identifying yourself for the audio recording.
In order to provide some validation for my opinion, may I offer the following few data points. I served four years in the military as an Army helicopter pilot, which included flying 1,238 combat missions in Vietnam as a gunship pilot. After receiving a degree in mechanical engineering for the University of Wisconsin, I spent over 35 years as a facility manager for several manufacturing companies, notably Case and Harley-Davidson. I was recruited by Harley to oversee the construction of the new manufacturing facility in 1996, and ultimately retired from that facility as a facility manager. I maintained my professional engineer status in multiple states throughout my career. I've been a GPH tenant since 2007, but used the facility for several years prior to that also. In over 17 years as a tenant, I have seen the airport operated in four distinct phases. First, prior to securing a bona fide airport manager, Clay County saw fit to rely on a sole individual that I understood to be an hourly worker from the Highway Department. During that period, I never saw another airplane operation or any other people while I was on the property. Second, Colin McKee was hired to manage the facility, and I saw an immediate surge in activity. Colin chose a new name for the airport, Midwest National, which seemed slightly ostentatious initially, but totally appropriate subsequently. The operation changed from a ghost town to a happening place. The office was staffed, the pilot's lounge grew a pool table, a large screen TV, comfortable seating, and pilot planning facilities. Jets parked directly in front of the FBO and were being refueled, and a red carpet was actually rolled out for the pilots and passengers. It was a real operation. Third, Colin left, and it seemed like the county's interest in the airport left with him. The staff continued to do their best and were always available and willing, but there was an undeniable change in atmosphere, and GPH became a lesser operation. Fourth, Apex came on the scene. While admittedly I don't know the facts, it is my understanding that within a month of operation, Apex realized they could not reach their own expectations and requested the county to forgive them some of their fiduciary obligations. Surely that should have been a distinct sign to Clay County, and that all was not well with the new FBO. Obviously, tenants alone cannot sustain this airport unless they are all unusually wealthy. It is, after all, a national airport. Nevertheless, Apex has shifted a huge financial burden on the existing tenants to adjust for their own apparent managerial inadequacies. I rent Hangar Bravo III, and that would be a small nested hangar. A year ago, I paid 330 a month, or 314 a month after a 5% discount for paying six months in advance. Apex is now requesting I pay 380 rent, plus $25 electricity, plus $164 of fuel at the last price per gallon I paid. That comes to $569, and 81% increased in my hangar cost. Apex is using bogus electricity and fuel charges to hide the true rent increase effect. While I typically fly regularly, once a week or more, my flying requires exceptionally little fuel, as most of the time I'm gliding with the engine off. I was unable to fly at all in December and January because of weather and a surgical procedure. When an airport project goes weeks to complete, as it did recently during resurfacing and then runway light repairs, I assume that the same changes will apply, even though we had no access to the primary reason for being an airport tenant. The fuel charge is supposedly to stimulate usage of the facility, but loss of use has never been adjusted similarly, and Apex most recently would follow that precedent. I suggest that Clay County should hold Apex's feet to the fire and live by the original contractual terms. I further believe that Clay County should hire a professional airport manager and operate the airport as a true Clay County asset. Having worked in private industry all my life for four years of, and four years of military service, and simultaneously having known many career governmental employees, I can attest to the fact that private corporations and private industry employees are no more efficient, competent, or motivated than their government counterparts. It is a fallacy to believe otherwise. Some organizations are well-run, some are not. Stuart Ostrander.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen wishing to come forward and make comment? Very well. That ends our comments from the public. I just want to say that, once again, this is a subject that will come up for discussion. I would encourage any citizen to reach out and contact any commissioner here on the, on the board. Reach out to me, reach out to any of the commissioners that you have here, and I will try to keep you informed as far as when this issue comes back up again. With that, we will be moving to our public hearings on the proposed budget. Any citizens who want to stay for that, obviously you're more than welcome. Okay. I'd like to open the public hearings for the 2025 proposed budget. There will be a presentation from the administrator, short presentation, and then any members of the public wishing to comment are welcome to comment on the budget. Please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to briefly do a brief overview for the 2025 budget. As the commission certainly is aware, the original overview was presented to the commissioners in November, and through the month of December, the commissioners had four work sessions that were dedicated to going through the budget and specifically our large major funds, and talking about goals and objectives. And so with that, I'd like to highlight the outcome of those sessions. So the first thing is to recognize that the 2025 budget aligns the resources with those focus areas that are identified in the county's strategic plan. There are five focus areas: safety and well-being, financially sustainable, economic opportunity, infrastructure, and employer of choice. And so as we've gone through the budget process, and in the beginning with department heads and office holders and staff, that was our main focus, is to align those resources to those focus areas and to accomplish the commission's goals. So with that, you can't have a budget without talking about numbers, so I'm going to spend the rest of the time giving a little bit of overview on the numbers. So this particular chart will show you and compare the 23 budget, the 24 budget, and the 25 budget. And so if you see the 25 budget at the very bottom, the total authorized amount for the 25 budget is $174.2 million. Now, we have, from year to year, different types of categories that can fluctuate substantially, that impact the budget, whether it's years that we've issued bonds, or when we have the one-time ARPA money, or we are successful in getting different grants. So this chart kind of actually tries to identify those revenues that sort of skew, and so how do we do a comparison? And so removing grants, ARPA funding, bond money, you'll see that we come up with a 2025 budget of $155.5 million, comparing that to 23's budget and 24's budget. So that is a 13% increase in the budget, taking away those one-time funding options. So where does the money come from? For the 2025 budgets, the revenue sources for the $174.2 million authorized budget, you can see by this pie chart, it tells you the funding sources. So the largest funding source for the county is sales and use tax, followed by, when we do authorization, it does include our reserves, and that's 28% of it. Fines, fees, licenses are 12%, and then property tax is 4% of our revenue, and grants this particular year represent 8%. So when we talk about sales tax, because that, and use tax, that is our largest revenue stream. So in the 2025 budget, we are estimating that sales and use tax will total $58.7 million. The county has three different types of sales tax. One is use tax, which is what we call it, but it's internet sales, and we're estimating that revenue stream to be $15 million next year, or I should say this year. Law enforcement sales tax is a dedicated sales tax approved by the voters that goes specifically to and funds our sheriff's office. And then we have the general sales tax, which is estimated to be $37.5 million. So all of those three types of sales tax total $58.7 million. The pie chart on the left tries to give an indication of either direct allocation of the sales tax, or specifically where it goes, or where we transfer sales tax on an as-needed basis. Based on the 25 budget, 47% of the sales and use tax goes to the law enforcement fund. 26% of it stays within the general fund, and then you have our other funds where we fund our capital, whether it's our general capital, our road and bridge capital, our parks capital. We also allocate funds to the TIF fund to pay our TIF obligations. So the pie chart there is to try and identify for you just exactly where the sales and use tax is allocated in 25 budget. We also talk about property tax. Our citizens and our businesses pay property tax. In 2025, that's estimated to be $6.7 million. The county has actually two mill levies. One is the general mill levy, which is .02. The commission did a voluntary rollback for that particular mill levy for the citizens in 2025. That's estimated to be $1.3 million. We also have a road and bridge mill levy, which is .0658, is expected to bring $4.9 million in in property tax, and that goes into the road and bridge fund. We also receive SRTAX, which is on our commercial property, and road and bridge receives a small amount in SRTAX, and then there is a parks SRTAX, and so that's estimated to be about $410,000 for next year. On the chart, I also show then the mill levies that were approved by the voters for specific services, like senior services, mental health, and development disability. Those funds are not necessarily in the county's budget, but the county does work and the commission does set that mill rate, and you see there the estimated revenues that we are projecting that will go to those specific agencies for those operations. We look at expenditures for the county in 2025. The authorized expenditure is $174.2 million. And the pie chart on the left will then identify what funds is that authorization going to. And so you can see that the general fund has 34% of the authorization, law enforcement has 18% of it, and road and bridge has 11% of it. Should be noted that the county has 36 different accounting funds that we manage. And so what you see here are our major funds, and in that very top where I say 4% of the authorization is in miscellaneous funds, that actually totals 23 small different funds that represent 4% of the budget. So what you see here on the chart are the major funds from general law enforcement, road and bridge, our capital, our communications, and then health and ARPA. On the right is actually the county's operating budget, which is $138.8 million. So authorization is full authorization, which includes one-time money, also includes our reserves, so that is $174 million. But that's not our operating budget. We, our goal is not to spend our reserves. And so we look at the operating budget, it's $138.8 million. And so the general fund is 28% of the operating budget, the law enforcement fund is 23% of the operating budget, and you have road and bridge at 11%, and so forth and so on, going around the chart. How do we get from authorization to operating? So this is for informational purposes, that again, the total authorization is $174.2 million. Well, we know we have those one-times monies, and so the ARPA fund, there's still some bond expenses on there, and so if we reduce that from the authorization, we're now down to $171.2 million. But we also, in our accounting process, have transfers. We transfer from one fund to another. And so when you consider that in expenditures, that is a double expense entry, but of course you must do that for accounting purposes. So if we reduce the amount that is transfers, we're now down to $147.2 million. But in that number is also our reserves, our rainy day money, and so that is showing up in expenditures. So when we take our rainy day and our reserves away, we get down to the operating budget for 2025, which is $138.8 million. How we're spending that operating budget by the focus areas that are in the strategic plan, you see that 40% of the operating budget is on safety and well-being. 29% of it is on infrastructure, which are the commission's top two priorities, followed by 12% is on the employer of choice, and then financial sustainability has 11% and 8% is spent in the economic opportunity. And so just briefly going over some of the highlights that are in the budget by focus area. So we look at safety and well-being. We have talked about this, but increasing our detention officer's starting salary and also every detention officer to address compression issues. This is a position that we have a number of vacancies on, and hard-to-fill positions. There's also additional software that is being presented and proposed by the sheriff's office. It also funds their annual vehicle equipment replacement, enhancing medical services, the detention facility, upgrading their handguns, and also the sheriff's office was very successful in getting a JAG grant, and so that is also factored in, in purchases of equipment and expenses per the grant. In our juvenile area, we're expanding the shift differential pay structure that was implemented this year. We're also doing security upgrades in the detention facility. We're doing restroom renovations and group home kitchen rehabilitation. A lot of the theme you will hear is taking care of and maintaining what we own. In the prosecutor's office, we're adding a paralegal position. We're also doing a salary adjustment to compare to market, and so that reflects an 8% increase for employees in the prosecutor's office. They are also enhancing some software requirements, and we're doing an office expansion, because they're adding additional personnel in their office area. In the courts, we're also doing technology upgrades. We've got additional resources for operational costs. They're doing some refurbishments in some of the courtrooms, and we are replacing the roof at Rooney Justice. As we look at the infrastructure focus area, so in facilities, we're doing parking lot maintenance. We're also just doing the roof I just talked about, came up tonight, a little bit earlier, but we have funds in the budget, in the capital budget, to do airport hangar roof maintenance, along with taxiway and apron seal coat. We have equipment replacement for our facilities, and also we're replacing HVAC units at the Schrader Building. In our parks, we're adding a- In our parks, we're adding a maintenance position. We're expanding software for customer experience in the field. We're also continuing the bunker replacement improvement program at the golf course and parking lot and trail maintenance, doing the first phase of a three-phase project of ADA accessibility to the docks. We're also doing and funding their vehicle equipment replacement. Also, we're going in and expanding the work that we do when it comes to septic removal and buying equipment to do that ourselves versus hiring a third party, replacing a fence at Mount Gilead, and we're updating the Parkmaster Plan. When it comes to road and bridge, again, a high priority of the commission, the street preservation program has increased 30% compared to this year. Also, we're replacing equipment. We're building a new equipment storage facility to put equipment under roof to help its life expectancy. We're replacing the Stockdale Bridge, and then we have a number of bridges that we're recommending to either design or also work with construction and design. Many of those, though, are tied to grant applications that we're applying for. When it comes to financial sustainability budget, there is improvements that we're doing at the IT when it comes to storage, and also funding our computer equipment program across the county. For our collector, there's some additional costs associated with one of our new programs in the assessor's office. We've just provided them a fleet of vehicles, so we needed to budget for maintenance for those vehicles, along with some technology replacements for them. In our economic opportunity budget, we are funding our local match to continue our corner markings of sections within the county, and we're upgrading a part-time code inspector to a full-time position. We also have funding in there for a ballot initiative in 2025. We, as we talked about earlier, we are changing the formula for the amount of funding that's set aside for TIFs from 7%, which is in this year's budget, to 6% next year, which frees up resources for us that's been allocated. Also recommending that a new position for grant writing be included. Also, in the past couple of years, when we reinstated our tourism and marketing, we were able to utilize ARPA funding, which is now diminishing, and so those costs for our tourism and marketing has come into the budget. And we also then have funding, working with not only all the cities in Clay County, but also our partners in Platte County, to develop a marketing strategy for the World Cup that will be here in 2026. As the employer of choice, what we have in the budget is a 5% salary adjustment for all department personnel. As I mentioned earlier, increasing the detention officers $7,000 in dealing with compression for existing personnel, doing an 8% market adjustment in the prosecutor's office, and expanding the shift differential pay for juvenile and detention and group homes. There is also a lump sum amount of money in the amount of $1.1 million set aside for the implementation of the classification and compensation study, which is coming along and hope to be presented to the commission, hopefully by the end of January for your consideration. We're also funding a pilot program that we did this year, which is doing fit-for-duty testing for those physically demanding positions. And in the budget, there are just a few new positions that are included, which is the paralegal for the prosecutor's office, the grant writer, a park maintenance position, and then upgrading the part-time to full-time code inspector. So with that, throughout, again, the workshops that the commission had and the introduction that you had, it was all live streamed. Also, it is available for anyone to have gone and watched on YouTube or on our website. We've also put information out on our Facebook, and we had a direct email for the budget support team involving our citizens, providing information to them. That, that's my overview for what is in the 2025 budget, and I turn it back to you, Commissioner Nolte.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the budget? Are there any members who would like, of the public, who would like to comment on the budget? Any members of the public that would like to comment on our budget? That closes the public hearings on the 2025 proposed budget. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The amended consent agenda this evening has four items on it. Commission meeting minutes from December 5th, December the 11th, December 12th, December 18th, and December 19th. Resolution 2025-12, approving invoice payments for Clay County for the period of December 30th, 2024 to January 3rd, 2025. There's a total of 102 invoices for an amount of $1,224,594.60. Resolution 2025-01, approving agreement and designate a county staff member to electronically sign for an Apple developer account for the purposes of implementing a WebTrack app for Parks Reservation System with Vermont Systems. And resolution 2024-02, approving a grant application to apply for reimbursable grant funding between MoDOT and Clay County for the roof rehabilitation project at the Midwest National Air Center.
Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda? Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve the amended consent agenda.
Motion's been made with approval of the amended consent agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2025 Ordinance 1A. Administrator?
2024 Ordinance 1A is an ordinance adopting the annual budget of Clay County, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025, and ending on December 31st, 2025 pursuant to section 50.525 through 50.651 of the revised statutes of Missouri, with the exceptions of all accounts associated with the operations of the Clay County Prosecutor's Office.
Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025 Ordinance 1A.
Motion's been made with approval of 2025 Ordinance 1A. Discussion?
Actually, I do have a comment.
Please proceed with your comment.
So one of the most important things this commission does is approve a budget, and although we give the up or down on it, all the work to this budget is done by our county administrator, our auditor, and all of their staff, and most of you sitting out there tonight. So I just want to say thank you. It's a tremendous amount of work, and it's a great budget. I'm real happy with the way it's come out, and not a whole lot of issues this time around that I'm very pleased about. So thank you, and great job by everybody involved in this. And with that, I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Excuse me, is 2025 Ordinance 1B? Administrator?
2025 Ordinance 1B is an ordinance adopting the annual budget of Clay County, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025, and ending on December 31st, 2025 pursuant to section 50.525 through 50.651 of the revised statutes of Missouri for all accounts associated with the operations of the Clay County Prosecutor's Office.
Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025 Ordinance 1B.
Motion's been made with approval of 2025 Ordinance 1B. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized. I close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next on our regular agenda, 2025-13. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-13 is approving invoice payments for Clay County Prosecutor's Office for the period of December 30th through January 3rd. There are six invoices totaling $1,991.62.
Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025-13.
Motion's been made with approval of 2025-13. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes. I recuse myself, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next on our regular agenda is 2025-14. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-14 is approving agreement for Autora dispatch management software products and services for a 24/7 life agent-supported tow record dispatch service. And Captain Agdarion is here to provide information to the commission about this program.
Please proceed.
Captain Amy Agdarion, Clay County Sheriff's Office, good evening, commission. The Autora software is a software that we learned about through several vendors. Kansas City Police Department is currently using this software, and what it is, is a product that will interface with our current RMS system and our dispatch equipment to allow people in the field, our deputies in the field, to order toes, monitor response time, things like that, so that it doesn't tie up our emergency communications personnel on finding a tow, calling the company, being in contact with them, when you've got a deputy out in the field expecting kind of a quick service. So what this agreement is, is a three-year agreement, and we are presenting that request because we were able to negotiate a lower rate over the course of the three years, but they will bill us annually, so we can budget for it moving forward. And while this year we are asking to approve this contract and then pay the first year out of a, we asked for it out of equitable sharing, however, in the future, I will be presenting this request to come from the 282 Emergency Communications Fund.
Commissioner Johnson, were you going to make a motion, or were you going to inquire?
Yes.
You are, you are recognized. Please proceed.
I had another commissioner want to comment, I just wanted to make sure we didn't close off this. Yeah, so if I understood this right, so this is basically, if we do this, if we approve this, it's a three-year commitment?
Yes.
That we're approving tonight, but this is just for the first year, and you're going to build in your budget the next two years?
Yes.
So what we're paying tonight is just for the first year?
Correct. Well, and let me be clear, though, that this first year, yes, it's, we're paying for the first year. I'm asking you to approve the three-year contract because we've negotiated a better rate over the course of time.
Got it.
But yes, moving forward, I would, I'm going to be budgeting it into the 282 fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Actually, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve now, and then we can have discussions. So I move to approve 2025-14.
Motion's been made with approval of 2025-14. Further discussion? Commissioner Wagner, I believe you seek recognition? If I can.
Yes, thank you.
There you are.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Captain. Just a question as I'm reading the background. As far as the bid process that brings this forward to us, you had mentioned that Kansas City uses the system. In our background here, it says that this is part of a cooperative purchasing agreement, so are we basically using the process of another jurisdiction to come up with this and make this recommendation today?
That is correct, yes, and so we are not purchasing Autora directly from Autora.
Yeah.
We are purchasing that software from a company called VertaSoft that does have a current cooperative purchasing agreement in place.
Okay, and so our process of establishing them as the right vendor is because they have gone through a competitive bidding process, and we have jumped on that?
That is correct, yes. Uh-huh, and I have already spoken with our purchasing department to make sure that we are all on the same page with how we are bringing this to the commission.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close. Commissioner?
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. That brings us to the issues that were added at the end of our regular agenda. The first issue on that list is 2025-05.
Resolution 2025-05 is a reappointment of members to the domestic violence board.
I don't know if you want to read the names. Doesn't matter that much. Commissioner Withington, you are seeking recognition.
So back on, give me one second here. Back on July 28th, this commission had a discussion item regarding, have you contributed to Commissioner's election campaign? That was supposed to be a question for all board and commission applications. Now, I have checked, and I have not seen that added. The staff was given consensus from the commission that that was supposed to be added. So first off, why hasn't that been added? And then also, Jerry, was that something that you took into consideration when you went to reappoint these? Because usually we get a copy of applications and resumes or something, but it looks like you were just reappointing, and we were not given any information other than the names. So did you not make them reapply?
We, I'll go ahead and let the commissioner, excuse me, the administrator answer, since you first addressed the question to her, and then I will pick up from there. So administrator?
Thank you. The question about contributing campaign was added to the current application on the website?
So I'm looking at the website, and I, so if you see one for Homer Simpson, that was me, but that question's not on here.
Okay, so I will have to check on that, because it was on there, and it was active, and we've actually received applications.
No, it says, are you a U.S. citizen? Are you a resident of Clay County? If so, how long? Are you a registered voter? Are you currently, are you current or delinquent on your county taxes? Do, Missouri law says something about gaming. Are you convicted of a felony? Have you ever been a member of the armed forces? And do you have any personal or financial interest dealings that might cause conflict? That's it.
Okay, so I will check on that, because it was on there, and we've actually had applications come in that did check.
Yeah, and so Jackie sent us hers for the airport advisory board, and I looked at her email, and it wasn't on that one either.
So some things happened to, and we'll take a look at that and make sure.
Okay.
But yes, it was active, and we have received some applications.
Okay, yeah, so can you find out why it's no longer active?
Yep.
And then let us all know once it becomes active again?
Absolutely.
All right.
Let me go ahead and go, there's a citizen had a question that might deal with what you had just dealt with. Let me go ahead and get her inquiry, and then you can, if you wouldn't mind repeating the question to me so everybody is aware of it, but did you have something on that particular point to add?
Jackie Richardson.
I'll go ahead and turn on the, yeah, you go.
I just wanted to make a statement that I don't know if you had Mike Philpott's application for the airport as well.
Oh, yeah, we saw, I saw both emails, yeah. But I didn't see that question on either one of the applications.
And Commissioner, if you wouldn't mind repeating the question?
Yeah, so the commission, consensus of the commission was that we were supposed to ask if anybody being appointed had contributed financially to any commissioner's campaign. Was that something that you took into consideration since these people didn't fill out the application, apparently?
I am not aware that any of these, these two individuals contributed anybody's campaign. I did not check on everybody's campaign.
Okay.
Further questions or discussion? Commissioner Lawson? Just a second. There you go.
Okay, can I ask about another board?
When we get to that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we're, yeah, we're taking each board individually.
Okay.
Which I, Commissioner Withington, I assume that was your intention when you moved the issues?
Yeah, it was just, I didn't want to, I didn't want somebody to think I was just picking, picking on one, so I figured I had to move them all.
That, your reasoning is certainly valid, no matter what it is, but I just wanted to make sure that we were.
I was just going to ask that question, and I wanted it answered, and like I said, I didn't want one person to think I was picking on them, so I just moved them all.
No problem, I just wanted to make sure, because we will vote on each one individually as to where I interpreted your motion.
Yeah.
Yes, man, go ahead.
So I do have a question then on this one. So do we know that neither of these folks contributed?
When those names, when those names are circulated, I would assume that commissioners, if they had that kind of a, that situation arose, they might well make it known to me? Because I don't go through everybody's ethics reports and...
No, I mean, I, I didn't, I don't even know the folks, probably great folks, but I just don't know them.
Sure.
So did they contribute to yours?
No. Ms. Kramer is a member of the police board and therefore not allowed to participate in politics. Ms. Fulmer, no? Not that I, that, not, not that I can recall, no. Further questions or comments? Is there, is there a motion on 2025-05? Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025-05.
Motion's been made for approval of 2025-05. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
That brings us to 2025-06. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-06 is the reappointment of members to the mental health board.
Discussion or motion, either one? Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025-06.
Motion's been made for approval of 2025-06. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
2025-07 was removed. That brings us to 2025-08. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-08 is the appointment of members to the workforce investment board.
Is there any discussion or motion? Commissioner Lawson, you are recognized.
Okay. You and I had a short discussion on this. I have, I, I pulled the actual description of this board, and it says, Missouri Workforce Investment Board will provide leadership for workforce development in Missouri based on data-driven decision-making and system accountability. The mission is, the mission of the Missouri Workforce Investment Board is to provide policy guidance and leadership to advance an integrated, demand-driven workforce and economic development system, which is a great thing to do. But how long has this board been actually in, in?
In effect?
Yeah.
Prior to my tenure here, it's rather a longstanding board. I believe it is, because we have members from different counties, I believe it is a, a commi, excuse me, a commissioner, board of the state.
All right. Now, is, is Commissioner Carpenter just now being appointed? Or he was appointed in 7:15 of night?
I'm sorry, 08, if I, if I have the motion correct, is the workforce investment board.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
So, yeah, there'll be Mr. Hampton and Mr. Reinhardt.
Yeah, but it says that the member, existing member, you are presiding, you're the alternate? Here.
Yeah, please, thank you. Yeah, there, there is no term listed on that. So we really, there is no term, so we're not being reappointed. We could be, I suppose, if we wanted to. But I mainly had those two in mind right now, because they are, they have expired already. So the other two positions, we can come, we can take those up, but they are not the subject of this particular resolution.
Okay. But here's, here's my whole point, and I shared this with you, but to no end. Jim Hampton is already an EDC person. Now, they go down to Jeff City, are in this, I mean, down this board, they're, they're really out there trying to do exactly what this mission statement says they're doing. Do they do that here, here? Or do they do, go to Jeff City? Or, you know, what, what is the normal? They have a board meeting? How often do you meet? How often do they meet?
Yeah, like I said, that is a state board, and that is something that I do not control the meetings on.
A state board?
It was, it's a creature of the state. It was created by state statute, not by county statute, or county ordinance, excuse me.
But, but the appointees are county people. They also have a workforce investment board that is a state board that I saw, and they have a whole different group of individuals on that, that have nothing to do with the county. But this is specifically county, correct? Thus why you can make the appointment.
These are the, these are the two, these are two positions that are the counties to make.
Okay, okay. My problem is this. Mr. Hampton is currently the head of the EDC for Clay County, and he is a temporary. So to me, and I, you know, maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, but my feeling is, he could not be around for very long. And consequently, I think that he is somebody that shouldn't be on this, because, you know, he could leave in a month or two, and, and any headway that he might have made will go away with him. So I'd like to see someone, whether it's another commissioner or whatever, but, or maybe, I don't know that anybody else has anybody they'd want to utilize that has this type of background. But, but I think putting someone who is a temporary, not employee, but a temporary assigned person, that, that this isn't really a good fit for this, this particular board.
Well, for clarification, Mr. Hampton was the executive director of EDC. He retired. He has returned, just so everybody knows.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm wanting to kind of make sure that the, the entire room follows this. And then he was, he came back to EDC until a permanent executive director is chosen. The selection of, or my selection of Mr. Hampton was not based on him being the permanent or continuing executive director of the EDC, while that has some, some play in the matter. There have been a number of reasons. One is, he has served on that before, so he has a very short learning curve. He has worked for a long time in the private sector. He has, was with EDC for God knows how many years. And if he were to, if the EDC were to, say tomorrow, find a permanent candidate or permanent replacement for that position, that would not necessarily preclude him from serving on that board. If he should, if that should be the case, then there would create a vacancy, and it would come back before this body once again.
Well, you know, I don't remember having much input in it in advance, but that's fine. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that forward, because I had concerns, so.
Very well. Commissioner Wagner, you're seeking recognition?
Yes, thank you. I just, just on a couple of the points made, and I, and I mentioned this in my daytime role at the Matty Road Center, where we have a workforce development program, and so we get into some of this stuff. So just, just to add a little extra detail, there are a number of these boards across the state that answer to the state, so that there's supposed to be some that are specific to each locality. So our locality isn't necessarily the Clay County locality, but the entire, kind of the metro area. So that's why this is, this sort of thing comes before us. And I'll just note, at least related to Mr. Hampton, and whether it was Mr. Hampton or someone else from Clay County EDC, I would just note that they do have the, their business and education committee, which I think is an important perspective for this board. Now, I will also be the first to say, I, I don't see a whole lot from the board itself.
No.
But having said that, that is a perspective that I think is important to that. I do tend to agree, though, or my, my thought would be, that if and when and at whatever time, Mr. Hampton is no longer an interim, and there's someone else, whether that's close enough to the end of this term or not, it does, certainly someone that is actively working in that field makes a lot of sense. Currently, he is, so I, I don't mind giving a little bit of a pass. But that connection between education and business, at least in the county, that the EDC is doing, I think is an important perspective here. And so I'll just throw those two points out. Thanks.
I want to add one other thing for clarification. Two positions here. Mr. Reinhardt is serving in that position currently.
Yeah.
I asked him, and he wanted to serve for another term. The other position is currently held by Kirk Davis, who is with the EDC as well. I asked him if he was interested in reappointment. He said that he was not, that he would, he didn't feel that, well, he felt he, he had an awful lot misplayed at the moment. He recommended Mr. Hampton, as did Mr. Reinhardt and a number of other people. So he comes recommended by members of that board.
Yeah. Let me, I don't mean to belabor this point, but, and it's my fault, I'll take complete blame on this. I never heard of this board. Did any of you ever, did you, did you ever hear of this board? You would have. Did you?
I just see it on the list. I don't know a whole lot about it.
Okay. Did you ever hear of this board?
It's come up a couple of years ago.
John?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Carpenter, Commissioner Carpenter, let me activate your mic.
Yes, I don't, you know, I don't know, is, is the short answer. And I, and I don't know when our local version of this board has met, and, you know, to whatever extent communications went out about such meetings, you know, I'm not privy to them. So I don't have any, you know, information to provide about it. In terms of the, you know, members, I'll just go ahead and say, you know, I, I, all three gentlemen are, you know, smart, capable, effective folks, the two current and the switch. I do think, you know, optimally, I would love us to make sure we're on these board seats, that we're casting a wide net in terms of potential appointments. Obviously, if we pull the, you know, same sort of core group from the same organization for all the appointments, you know, I think we'd be well-served to branch out, not just have the same folks from the EDC every time, per se. That being said, all three gentlemen, I think, are fully capable of, of doing the job. But, you know, to what extent that job is out there being done, that's a great question. And, you know, if somebody wants to help us get to the bottom of that, I think that'd be great.
Well, you've already got Tony Reinhardt, that's a member of the EDC board, I think the executive board, isn't he?
No, I, I think, I think he is cyclical.
He was, was he?
He was, yes.
He was on the exec board. And Jim? And I haven't seen huge numbers of businesses come into this county from the EDC. So if they didn't, if we're not getting huge amounts of businesses coming in, why put this on the board for us to try to do what their mission statement says? Anyway, you know, once again, we, we see the list for the people who are going to be put on boards. By the time we see those people, we are asked, now, this last time, we were asked, do any of us have somebody that we'd like to put on one of those boards? Well, by that time, these people already know that they're going to be put on the board. So all I'm going to say is, I'd like to see that done a little differently, but I asked for that last year, and, and it didn't happen. So I'm going to say that for my money, I, I would not approve this at all. I'd like to see some fresh, new people with fresh, new ideas get out there and try to carry on this task, and, and not just same '06 and '07. So anyway, that's it.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, and not to belabor it, but just simply to say that, no, well, I, I do understand that position, because we want people to get out there and do things and make Clay County better. I would just note, in this particular case, this is information that gets funneled to the state, because this is where it was born. As, as, well, Governor Parsons is a great example, he's all about workforce. So, so the state, DED, which I think runs, no, it's not DED, I think it may be Social Services, whoever does it, they, they're taking the information that's coming from the ground here, and it's making its way up, and then the state decides what the heck to do with it. And so the reality is that you could appoint anybody to this board, and all you're really deciding on is, what kind of information do you want sent? Which, which is why I'm not, I don't have a heartburn over, over this. But what your comment does remind me of, and maybe a suggestion to make, is simply, you know, you had to go look up what this is, what does this board do?
Yeah.
Right? And, and I would just, I would just say that my observation would be that boards usually come in two different forms. One is, you are sending your expertise to someone, and then they're going to do something with it. And then there are some that are actually going to do something.
Yeah.
Right? You know, you have this that, that's going to advise, you've got a library board that's going to actually manage something. And, and to me, that is two different, two different types of boards of what they are supposed to do. And, and so I think it, it does make some sense, to the degree that we can in the future, to have some sort of description as to what it is they do, and whether you want to even go so far as to say, this is simply an advisory board, or this is actually something that operates something. Maybe helpful in the future. And so I, I totally understand the comments and why they're made, and so I just offer that suggestion for the future that may be helpful in deliberating in the future. Thank you.
Before I recognize you, Commissioner Lawson, I just want to, I just want to make a comment, and that is, you were talking about, you didn't want to belabor the point. I don't see you as belaboring the point. I see you as asking good questions and having the full discussion, that is, I think, the hallmark of a good functioning commission. So at least for my part, don't think that I believe that you are belaboring the point. You're asking good questions, and I will now recognize you to ask some more good questions.
Well, if he quit saying stuff, I wouldn't come up with some new idea. I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm joking. You know that, Scott. I, I think you're intelligent and wonderful, and I love you.
I'm sorry. Commissioner, Commissioner Wagner, you are now out of order, and you were in timeout over there.
No. Here's the only thing I, I think I would like to see from, from these types of boards in the future, and, and from all of our boards. What I started to say earlier, all these boards are so, all of these people that are gone on these boards, that we're looking at approving, God bless them, all of our boards, that they are willing to give up their time for zero money, with a couple exceptions. However, I want to hear from those boards. I want them to come in once a quarter. These guys, if they're doing something spectacular, I'd like to know about it, so that you know that when we appoint these people and we give them that responsibility, I want to know that, that they're a functioning group, and they're, they're doing something to benefit this county, the same way that our other boards should come in, how often they want to come in. I don't care if they come in every week. But if they come in and just give us a little report and say, here's the things that are so damn wrong with the parks, and let's fix them, or here's something that's wrong with the airport, you guys aren't doing this right, here's what we suggest. I want that feedback, or why are they wasting their time, and why are we wasting our time appointing them? That, it's just that simple. So anyway, fine, if these are the people everybody wants, let them have them. But I, I wish that it had been somebody new and exciting and good-looking.
Now, 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 wait a minute. Commissioner Carpenter and I are both participants. Now, while I may not hold up my end of that particular responsibility, Mr. Carpenter, excuse me, Commissioner Carpenter is certainly more than able to take up where I leave off.
I'm joking.
Commissioner Johnson, you are seeking recognition?
First of all, I'd like to say, I think Jim and Tony are both very handsome men. On top of that, I have a couple of questions, depending on Commissioner Lawson, how you answer this one. Do you, do you intend to vote against these nominations?
Let me go ahead and activate your microphone, would you please?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, so she said, yeah. So then my next question is, because I would love to see unanimous on, on any board appointments that we all agree on it. And since you are voting, going to vote against it, were there other applicants, were there other applicants that put in for this board that you thought would do better, or do we have any other options?
Sadly, no.
Okay.
But I, I do have a couple, now that I'm more familiar with the board and everything.
But nobody's put in, nobody's put in for them for this round, then?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, I, I think I'd move to approve 2025-08.
Motion's been made for approval of 2025-08. Further discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1.
Next item on our agenda is 2025-09. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-09 is a reappointment of members to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board.
Commissioner Johnson?
Moved to approve 2025-09.
Motion's been made for approval of 2025-09. Further discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Final issue on this evening's regular agenda is the, is 2025-10. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-10 is appointment of members to the Clay County Extension Council for Missouri University.
Commissioner Johnson?
Moved to approve 2025-10.
Motion's been made for approval of 2025-10. Discussion? Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you, just a housekeeping question for our attorney. Is there any reason for the, for Commissioner Carpenter or Commissioner Lawson to recuse themselves? Very well, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, Commissioner, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
I believe that concludes our regular agenda. With that, we go into reports. Administrator?
Thank you, there's one report included in your packet, and that is the Auditor's Cash Basis Monthly Report for December 2025, uh, 2024.
That brings us to county administrator comments.
Thank you, I do have a couple. One, I certainly want to give a shout out to a number of employees that worked tirelessly over the weekend, starting actually last Friday in preparation for the storm. And as we all know, we were hit substantially with a lot of snow, and before the snow came, we were hit with a lot of ice. And so just to give you some information and context for the public, you know, our road and bridge team were working 12 hours, 12 hours on, 12 hours off. We had, um, 716 man-hours that were used by the road and bridge to deal with our roads from January 4th through January 8th. We used 1,214 tons of salt on all our roadways. Um, and so this year, we, we launched and we did sort of, um, a quiet pilot on it where on the website, residents could go out, um, and track our snow operations and determine how, when was the most recent time that our plows were on the street, where they're inquiring, whether it's been in the last 12 hours, the last 24 hours, the last 36 hours. We didn't make a big production of it because it was our first one, but of course, we thought we'd get a light dusting and that would be our pilot program versus a 12-inch program. But we certainly have learned from that and we certainly want to publicize that more and encourage our residents to go to our county website under Road and Bridge and look at our snow operations, and you can find that information about when was the last time our crews were on a particular road. We've received a few calls, uh, we did, you know, there, there were some casualties, we, there are a few mailboxes that, unfortunately, just because of the type of road and, and conditions, that sustained some damages, and we're going to work through those issues. Um, we've had some follow-up calls, requests for plowing, about 34 have come in over this period of time. So I want to encourage residents that if you do have concerns and you would like for us to take a look at your road, you can either call our number at 816-407-3300, or you can go online to request a work order, or you can email us directly at roadandbridge@claycountymo.gov and give us your address and the road, and we will take a look at that. But it certainly wasn't just our road and bridge employees that were out there during the elements. Our park crews were out there, um, during cleaning, clearing all around the buildings and all the parking lots for patrons. They also assisted, we pulled them in and they actually are out helping our road and bridge crews. Um, and our facilities team, they're there trying to figure out what to do, all, all the snow in parking lots and cleaning sidewalks, um, around county properties. So they all did an outstanding job and we appreciate everything that they did. The sheriff's office was obviously very busy, um, they responded to 29 stranded motorists during those three days, they responded to nine non-injury crashes, and there was one injury, um, crash that they, and then they also assisted the highway department and the City of Liberty when I-35 was closed, um, due to road conditions, and so we assisted with that. And then certainly, and as the commission knows, we were, um, closed to the building, to the public on Monday, uh, to keep our staff safe, but our staff was home diligently working remotely, um, still doing operations and is still serving the public. So I want to give a shout out to all the county employees because I think they did a great job. And the last but not least I have is, um, January 2nd, we opened up applications for our senior tax relief program. So just to give you a little information about that, um, so it opened last, well, on New Year's Day, but officially in the building on January 2nd. Since January 2nd, we have received 2,227 applications online in nine days, and we have helped 431 individuals personally, either here at the courthouse or at the annex over five days. Um, so great, and we've had wonderful response from our citizens, um, about hearing how easy it is online to submit it, and certainly then how helpful our staff is here or at the annex in helping individuals through that. So again, we encourage those individuals that are eligible to come in. Lines have not been long here in person, uh, we, we did have a little extra business today, but, um, people had to wait a little bit, but most of the time, there's not been waiting at all, and we've been able to assist individuals as they come in. So again, we want to encourage everybody to, that's eligible, to come in and see us or fill it out online. And then the last time I have is the commission's next regular meeting is next Thursday, the 16th, here at 6 o'clock, here in the chambers.
Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Withington, I believe you had a comment you wanted to make?
Uh, first, I want to start by, uh, saying that, you know, today's the law enforcement appreciation day, so thank you to all the brave men and women who are out there, uh, keeping our community safe. Also, I sent, Tom, I sent you a message and I sent our facilities team and everybody, so thank you for all the work you guys did, uh, during the snowstorm. I also sent that same email to, uh, every public works director, every police chief, fire chief and city manager in Clay County, they did a stellar job, and, um, had several people contact me in Kansas City, they were a little behind, but, uh, reached out to city manager Brian Platt, and he was very responsive to get those elderly people that need to go to the doctor dug out, so thank you to them. Um, also, I, I, earlier, I do want to see us have a detailed conversation on the airport, I want to see all the financials. Uh, you know, I've shared with pretty much this entire commission, so I'll just say it publicly, uh, philosophically, I don't think the county should be competing with private business, I don't think, uh, an airport is core government services, I don't think we should be in the airport business, I would like to see us look at getting out of the airport business. I've been told by several people, uh, tenants at the airport, that it's such a gem, so I don't think we'd have a problem finding somebody to take it off our hands for us, right? And also, you know, I think there's, I had one person call me and say, there's 40 to 60 tenants out there at the airport, and, um, I told him, I just don't, I, I don't think I should, we should be asking a quarter of a million people to subsidize their hobbies or anything like that, and, uh, I've shared the same thoughts on the marina, the golf course, so, um, that's just where I'm at on that. Uh, but yeah, thank you to, again, to everybody who worked, and thank you to our law enforcement.
Commissioner Lawson?
Thank you. First of all, I want to apologize for screaming, "Shut up." Um, you know, I, that is not my normal method of doing business, but sometimes you just lose your cool. So I did, and I'm sorry, uh, to the entire commission, all the wonderful people here. Uh, secondly, I usually agree with everything Commissioner Withington says, but on this point, I won't, because I do think that not so much the airport, but your, our parks, um, and our golf courses, all of that, I think the trails, all of it, is a service to the full community. If you go out there to the parks in the summer, like I've always said, you see it packed with people. Everybody's, you know, out there camping and fishing and boating and having a heck of a good time. Uh, what I would like to see, and, and we always can see this, nobody hides it from us, that's for sure, but be a little more maybe, uh, involved in looking at how much money do we spend on this particular thing, and how much revenue comes in from that particular item? And if it's pretty even up, then I think we're doing a good job because we're offering a service, but we're not losing money. At the airport, I have a special place in my heart for that airport, because I've said before, my husband was involved in the starting of that airport, I was there when they shoveled the first shovel of dirt for it, and it used to be someplace that was packed, they had all kinds of fly-ins and, you know, it was just a busy, busy place. Things have changed, it's not quite doing the same thing, and I don't know why that is, but I would like to really get involved with our airport board and our new FBO and, and kind of work together to say, here's the five things I'd love to see done, and then those folks out there say, here's the five things I'd like to see you do, you know, as a county, as a commission, and work together to make it profitable. Then down the road, if, you know, if the time comes that we sell, at least we're selling a very profitable item, but, but I just see it as a, it just a, a great service that we do, and, but not a lot of our, our county people utilize it, so, and in fact, I've said this before, a friend of mine who has lived in this county for 50 years probably, didn't even know we had an airport, and that just blew my mind. But at any rate, you know, that, that's something we need to talk about and, and make it more of a, um, a, uh, item that's brought to the front and let people know what we've got and the great service. Anyway, the other thing I want to say is, um, for some of you who are old timers, Beverly Sue Ryan, who was our public administrator for 30-some years, did a spectacular job. Besides that, I think she was real instrumental in forming, uh, the State Public Administrator Association. She passed away, uh, a couple of days ago, 90-some years old, was a feisty old gal and just dedicated as heck to this county. For those years that she worked here, she did a spectacular job. Wonderful person, very approachable, very caring about everybody she was involved with. So God bless her and so sorry to her family, she'll be missed, but she was a great gal, respected her greatly. The other thing, um, and last but not least, is I'm really looking forward to this next four years. I'm not going to stop being what I am. If I feel strongly about something, I'm going to yell and scream and beat the desk, but I feel like that's what people put me here for. So, um, everybody, I hope we have a very successful, wonderful '25 and make this county even more successful than it is now. Oh, one last thing I want to say, because I don't feel like he gets credit enough. Our auditor worked tirelessly on this budget. We, it wasn't done by just us or just Diana or just somebody else. He was involved very heavily with that, and I think he deserves a pat on the back for his involvement in this budget. So thank you very much, Victor.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, thank you. Um, well, why don't we just start with the budget? I, I, I want to add my, uh, my kudos to the entire team, uh, Diana, to the auditor, to everyone. It's a lot of sausage making, and, uh, and, uh, it comes in a casing that looks like this, and, but it's very good, it's very delicious, and I'm glad we got it through. Uh, speaking of sausage, I, I foresee a lot of sausage making related to this airport, uh, and so a couple of comments I want to make related to that. First of all, it's been said that we should look at it, or it's been intimated or inferred that we should look at it, much like we do marinas and parks and these sorts of things, and I would argue that you can't do that. That is a false, um, connection. I can go to any city and find a park, I can't go to every city and find an airport. I don't ask people to rent the slide that their kid is going to go down, I, you know, and when it comes to the county, we actually have, as was shown in the budget presentation, sources of funds that are specific to parks. You do not have that for the airport. The, the airport, by its nature, is a business operation, and, um, the question I think before us, and that will be coming before us, is, is that a business we should be in? I, I would note that the possibility of finding a private operator who will privately own it, I, I would tell you, don't even think about that, because there are so few in this country. Um, and one of the reasons for that is because private airports can't get federal funds, at least to my knowledge, I've never seen one that did. So anyone who is going to privately operate it has to not only figure out how to operate it, but how to deal with the capital. And as has been talked about this evening, the capital issues are such that they are very difficult, and that's why we had even this resolution this evening. But at the end of the day, to my colleague's point a little bit earlier, I don't think you ask citizens who will never utilize that airport to now subsidize it, and in fact, they have. And so I think as we get complaints about management, it's, it's very interesting, and not to delve into it because there will be another time, but we've had individuals, we've had FBOs, and there has been, generally speaking, some failure at some point in each of those processes. So I don't necessarily think that hiring someone else or finding another FBO changes things, because if we've had four in the last 10 years, I'm, I'm, I, I, there are folks who think I'm a good, a real optimist, and I am, but I'm not optimistic about that. Uh, so my request, when we get to that point, is really for three pieces of information. Profit and loss statement, or whatever is, uh, appropriate to that type of operation. I'd like to, uh, know what our tenant income has been, and I'd like to know what our fuel sales have been, and I'd like to go as far back as you possibly can. As was mentioned by one of our, uh, public members about four, or the, the email, rather, that was pointed out, um, four different phases, which I guess goes back 10, 15 years, maybe. If we can go back 10 to 15 years, I'd love to see it, because I'm less interested in about what this FBO did versus what our staff person did, but what is the trend on those issues? If the trend over time is more money coming in to support the operation, if the trend is we're actually not getting, uh, much more, or we're seeing less in tenant, um, insur, um, income, if we are seeing less as, as it goes to fuel sales, then I have to ask the question, also knowing that unlike other airports, we are constricted. You, you can't build anything else around this airport, you can't create other income streams to support the operation. All of that suggests to me that there has to be a real discussion, however it needs to be made, as, as, as my colleague has suggested, as to whether or not this business can operate in the long term, because I don't think I can go to people who have never used that airport, who never will use that airport, and say, "I'm going to use your tax dollars to subsidize it." We've had that discussion related to nonprofits in this very room just a couple of months ago, correct? Honestly, that's the same sort of discussion, and I don't mean to say, or don't mean to suggest, that the airport doesn't have value and that the airport doesn't have, isn't an amenity that we should have, but there's got to be a dollars and cents to that as well. It is a business operation, and we have to understand how that works. Uh, so if, if you could take my little- So, if, if you could take my little list, that'd be great. Last couple of things I want to mention is, I too want to thank all those folks who hit the streets when it was snowing. I was out of town, I came home, and I had to go shovel my driveway. It was not fun. I can't imagine what it was like for, for our team, but they did a stellar job and I'm very thankful for it. And I'm hopeful, at least so far, it doesn't look so bad, and hopefully it won't be bad tomorrow. But, I made you look. And, and finally, you know, the only freeze I want to talk about or hear about is a tax freeze, and I am very pleased with the numbers that we've had so far. And so, thank you for the work. I know there is more work to do over the next several weeks, but that is an impressive start. That means that all the work that staff has done and this commission has done to put the word out there, it is taking hold and taking effect. And I think that was the whole point, after all. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Johnson, do you have any comments you'd care to make?
Yeah, I'll try and be brief and quick. I thought I saw some snow come down earlier out the window. Maybe I was wrong, but it's supposed to be coming pretty soon, so we'll get through this. First of all, we didn't meet last week because we had a swearing in for four of our commissioners, for anybody who missed that. So, congratulations again to Commissioners Withington, Lawson, Thompson, and Carpenter, and I look forward to working with all four of them again for at least the next two years for me, before my term expires. But congratulations to them, and I think the county's in good hands with them here. Airport's been discussed. I won't rehash that, but I fully support completely transparent conversation on the airport and, and what's happening there. So, looking forward to that. One thing I would like to add to the list of things to do, as far as discussions in the future, and that is, I think we need to have a discussion and, more than discussion, but on the sunshine law. And I'll tell you why. Obviously, tonight was an example, but I, I mean, I get into it all the time with, and the sunshine laws. Well, and this really, it's coming down to the issue, is there a letter of the law versus a spirit of the law? And any good attorney is going to tell you the letter of the law, just like our attorney does, and says, "You can and can't do this according to the law." I'm a spirit of the law guy when it comes to sunshine law, and I think we, we, with any law, once it's in effect, you find out there's some flaws in it. And I think this is one where we actually need an attorney, either we come to consensus as to what we're going to follow, the spirit or the letter. And if we don't have a consensus, maybe we ask for an attorney general's opinion, a state attorney general's opinion, which we could, it's easy to do. Whether he gives one or not, I don't know, but we can always ask. So, maybe we can have that discussion and talk about where the issues are, because we do look, I think, to the public. I mean, we banter back and forth up here and, and yell at each other and, you know, tell each other to shut up. We're fine, you know, when we go behind these doors, but, you know, to the public, it doesn't look good. And really, the issue is, we, we got to settle the sunshine law thing. What, what does it mean and what's the interpretation that we're going to, we're going to settle on here? And maybe it means the attorney general weighs in on that. We're not the only ones to have this issue, by the way. It's the same issue that other, I know, boards and commissions have. So, anyways, I'd like to see that sometime in the future, nothing urgent, but sometime in the future. And then with that, last thing I have is, I received an email today from a, someone was in the can here. I won't say his name, but I'll just tell you, he's an extremely high-ranking law enforcement executive from a surrounding county here. And he's had some experiences with the county over the last several years. I think he lives in the county. And I don't know if the rest of you got this email or not, but I just want to read. He mentioned several names from several different experiences he had. He didn't know all the names, but I want to throw out the names, just shout out the names that he mentioned as kudos in this email. Dieta Jacobs, he mentioned twice in two different experiences he had with Dieta. A nice lady in the recorder of deeds, that's all he knows. The assessor's office, including Joe Mezakasa, is that a name in there? And Tracy Baldwin, roads and bridge for the snow plowing job they've been doing. And the sheriff's office, he specifically mentioned Sheriff Aiken and Major Rob Hayes. So, anyways, I want to read, it's a very long email. I just want to read the last paragraph, part of the last paragraph, which makes me so happy because this is, this is just, to me, this is a big deal. It says, "I have always stressed to my staff that oftentimes, when we interact with our citizens, we only have one chance to make an impression. Our actions will result in a positive impression or a negative one. As you can imagine, especially with your background in law enforcement, sometimes we fall short. I'm happy to say with all of my interactions with Clay County employees, they have succeeded in providing outstanding customer service." That's, that's, that makes me so happy. And, and that's just because I've really stressed that. I've always thought, you know, we should always be trying to create raving fans at every contact. And, and you guys are doing that, and, and the staff is doing that, and that is so important. And so, thank you to staff. I'm going to forward this email to the, to the county administrator and, and let her dole that out. But, but thank you so much to everybody for the, for the fine work you're doing.
Commissioner Thompson. I'm sorry, there you go.
I'll just talk loudly. That's okay. I'll project.
It doesn't seem to be wanting to engage.
There we go. I would keep this very simple and brief. Thank you for everybody who worked on this budget. I think this is something wonderful and we can all be very proud of. And there's lots of man-hours that went into this, and it's great. I want to thank everybody who worked on keeping our roads clear and clean. I know there was some shout-outs, so I enjoy driving our Clay County roads here in town, taking joy rides, hunting for Pokemon with my children. And please, please, let's have school tomorrow. So, it'd be wonderful. Get those kids to school. And I, I also look forward to having further conversations about our airport. It sounds like there's some bigger issues that we need to deal with. So, welcome to 2025. We got some more work to do.
Commissioner Carpenter. Let me do that again.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. As you all know, my mom died last year, and I didn't, at the time, feel up to saying anything to any of you or about her. And I, and I still don't, really, but yesterday was her birthday and just want to say, you all were very supportive, lots of nice cards. Jay was just asking this past week about the holidays. All of you have been really lovely, and so I just want to say thank you to you all. And she was the best mom. Also, want to say thanks on the budget stuff, and I'll just add, and elected officials and department heads who did a lot of work on their own as well. So, thanks to them. Want to add my thanks to the folks who worked the road crews, obviously. We don't get winter storms like that very often. A lot of work, and I was driving up North Oak in Kansas City today, and person after person was walking in the street because the sidewalks aren't clear. And just a reminder of how important it is to, to do that work. And lastly, on the issue of, that Commissioner Withington and that Commissioner Wagner spoke to with the, with the airport and the golf course to that matter, I do think, you know, I've mentioned it before, I do think at some point, some form of official discussion around what options are with those amenities makes sense. Strongly agree with Commissioner Wagner that we ought not be subsidizing those things with taxpayer funds. I think if we're gonna, I think government gets spread too thin. I think government tries to do too much. I think these are both good examples of it, especially frankly, the golf course. And I would rather focus those resources and time and attention on necessary services that this county provides, like infrastructure with our roads that are widely used, things like public safety, et cetera. You all know the, the important work. And if we are going to stay in the business of, of doing those things, and I agree with Commissioner Wagner, that, you know, those are both business operations, then I think they ought to be business operations that pay for themselves, is the bottom line. So, that's my view on, on that. Look forward to those future discussions with you all, and ditto on hoping 2025 is a great year.
Commissioner Johnson.
I apologize. I asked for a go-back for one more thing because Commissioner Carpenter made me think of it. I was born and raised in LA County, did most of my career in LA County. You guys know what's going on in LA County right now with those fires. It is absolutely horrible, particularly the Pacific Polisades Fire. Incredibly horrible. One of the things that they're really focusing on in the political perspective is, hey, we're, we're spread too thin. We're cutting vital resources, our fire departments, our sheriff department, our police department, and the sheriff out there, the LA sheriff is actually a real good friend of mine, went through the police academy together, worked together, we're partners for a long time, Robert Luna. But the issue is, government sometimes tries to do too much, and they spread themselves too thin, and we can't be all things to everybody. And sometimes, as was mentioned, we just have to focus on what are our core things that we need to do? And do those well. Instead of trying to do everything, let's just do what's the most important thing that's expected from government, and let's do it well. And I think we're seeing a result of, of maybe, and more will come out, but I think we're seeing a result in LA County, what happens when they start cutting budgets from vital resources to do other things that maybe aren't as necessary. So, maybe we've got some lessons to learn from what happened out there, but we'll see as, as it unfolds.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I was, I was going to ask you before I went because I wasn't sure if it was on by accident, so Commissioner Withington, you are activated.
No, I just want to say, I'm not against parks. I love trails. Scott knows. I've advocated for millions of dollars worth of trails in, in North, in Kansas City area. I'm a huge supporter of trails. When I talk about parks, I'm talking about the golf course and marina. Our auditor last year, at my request, gave us a report that shows that we're subsidizing millions of dollars and losing millions of dollars. I don't think a golf course and a marina are core government functions. I would like to see us expand our parks department into a county-wide parks department. You look across the county line over at Platte County, you see it how transformational the Line Creek Trail has been. That's because it's been a partnership with Platte County, Riverside, Kansas City, Northmore. I want to see us have a county-wide parks department, not just a rural parks department. And if we're losing millions of dollars every year, or however long Victor's report showed, I mean, that money could be going to a world-class county-wide parks department. Where I live in Kansas City North, and Scott can attest to this, it's the least walkable area in the entire, probably, Kansas City metropolitan area. Kids can't even walk to school. But what it's loaded up with are greenways that Kansas City acquired in 1950 when they annexed into the Northland. Those places could be revitalized or, you know, transitioned into a greenway with trails and walking. We've done that in the Cersei Creek area. Kids were bussed over one mi, or two miles round trip to school atop him when the school is a quarter of the mile from the Holiday Hills neighborhood. We were able to activate the greenway with a trail. Now, these kids can walk to school. So, I would like to see us, especially in the Western District that gets no county services, I would like to see the county start looking at a county-wide trail system or a county-wide park system. And if we're losing money on the parks, you know, we've been told by people in Smithville, I've been told by the mayor of Smithville, that there are private industries, or private businesses that are interested in the golf course, that are interested in the, in the marina. So, for me, it's just a philosophical thing. I don't think the county should be competing with private industry, and I think that we have an opportunity to rethink our parks, park system and have a county-wide park system, not just a rural park system. So, don't, I don't want anybody to think that I'm anti-parks because I am most definitely not anti-parks. Scott, you were there. We built a brand-new playground at Cersei Creek. We've activated the Big Shoal Greenway with trails, Cersei Creek Greenway Trail. So, I'm, I'm all for reimagining a county-wide park system.
Thank you for your clarification. I'll go through a few. A lot of what I would care to say has already been said, so I'll try to, to hit this kind of quickly. First off, Commissioner, Commissioner Lawson's, we, I realize that, you know, that emotions can run a little bit high. I think in her comments, when she addressed that issue, I think it illustrated what a classy lady she is and that she is someone who is passionate about, about the issues that she, that she believes in. And I think better to maybe overstep occasionally rather than not be committed enough to the good of the county. So, I just wanted to make that comment clearly. Want to also say that I look upon the airport not just as a recreational opportunity. I think there are a lot of areas to talk about on that, and we do need to have multiple discussions. I would also point out that the airport is the potential to be an economic development driver in that if we want to attract headquarters and that sort of thing, having a private airport where executives can come in, might well help us to be able to develop our, our economic base much more, much more quickly. I had not heard about Beverly Sue. That is tragic. I didn't hear that she'd passed away. I am so sorry to hear that. She, you're right, she was a very classy lady, and I, I remember interacting with her, and it, it is sad to see, to see someone, a, a public servant of her caliber no longer with us. Budget, obviously, I want to join the, the rest of the commission in commending everybody involved. That would be the administrator, the auditor, and a lot of people who came in and, and put a lot of work in on, on making sure that this budget came in as good a shape as it did. On the sunshine law, I think something that would be useful is, there was, it's been some years ago, but there was somebody from, I believe, the state who came in and had almost a little seminar, and I think that might be something worth checking into, to have that person come in and make a presentation and also answer questions. So, I will reach out. Right now, they're kind of busy down in Jeff City, but I think we can certainly get ourselves a, a place in line to where we can have someone from the state government come in and give us a more definitive definition and a primer. All of us can use a refresh of what the laws mean. And also, as time goes on, there are fresher interpretations from the state. I think, I think having that clarification is, is a way to really move us forward in a way that is, is very constructive. Finally, with the, obviously, we had a little bit of snow recently. I want to commend all the, the workers, obviously, the sheriff's office and, and their good work, all the different departments and, and parts of the government, particularly the road crews clearing the roads. When we heard about the, the unfortunate fatality in Jackson County, that just underscored the fact that these ladies and gentlemen who are out there working on those roads are not just working really hard and they're not just putting in long hours and they are bringing skill sets to bear. There is an absolute element of danger that I think we all need to be aware of as citizens. When you see these workers out there, please take care to give them as much leeway as possible. And I'd also like to offer my condolences to Tom. You came in at a time just when we had a, a very exciting time, so I, I hope, I hope this doesn't put you off of Clay County, that we kept you very, very busy. But I, I appreciate your hard work and the ability that you've had to be able to jump in and, and provide good leadership and obviously, top to bottom, a great job done with all the county offices. So, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.